The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, June 27, 2017. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being just as small.
Please remain standing.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this afternoon. We ask that you would bless us with wisdom and knowledge and understanding. We pray that your kingdom would come, your will would be done, on earth as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell?
Here.
Council Authority Member District 4 Darlene Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Council Authority Member District 2 Cindy Fossey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Leanne Jones Cruz?
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien?
Here.
Changes to the agenda. There is one item where we have conflicts of interest which will be stated later and we'll use exactly the same participants as we did in the last procedure. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
I have a conflict of interest on Item 5.1B.
I have a conflict of interest on Item 5.1B.
I have a conflict of interest with Item 5.1B.
Item 5.1B, we will do the same procedure as we did the last meeting. Public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any Oops, let me get that. Any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person. Each person may speak once during the time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to their city council. Do we have public comment tonight? Saying no public comment, we're going to proceed to the consent calendar consisting of Item 3A, wave readings; Item 3B, approval of June 13, 2017, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes; Item 3C, a resolution approving amendments to the Joint Powers Agreement of the Standards Laws Council of Governments; Item 3D, a resolution appointing Brandon Cody to the City of Riverbank Budget Advisory Committee. Do we have any council member wishing to discuss, pull any of the consent calendars?
Mayor, one clarification. Item 3D, under, I had a couple council members ask me about the financial impact. That's a $50 per meeting stipend that's received by the Budget Advisory Committee member, just for clarification.
Any others? Do we have anyone from the public wishing to pull a consent calendar item? Saying none, I bring it back to the council for a recommendation and/or approval.
I make a motion that we accept the consent calendar as it stated.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Votes unanimous? Public hearings, consisting of Item 5.1, a resolution for each landscape and lighting district amending and/or approving the engineers' report and levy and collection of annual assessments related thereto for fiscal year 2017-18; and a resolution for each landscape and lighting district ordering the levy and collection of annual assessment for fiscal year 2017-18. The landscape and lighting districts are named as followed. Item 1A, Consolidated Landscape and Lighting District; Item 1B, Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting District; Item 1C, correction, Item 5.1C, Ridgewood Place Landscaping and Lighting District; Item 5.1D, River Cove Landscaping and Lighting District; Item 1, excuse me, 5.1E, Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District. We will consider Item 5.1A, C, D, and E before we consider Item 5.1B.
Mayor, good evening, council. Our Development Services Administration Manager Kathleen Kleek will be giving this report this evening.
If I'm correct, you want me to skip over the Crossroads Landscape and Lighting slides?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, City of Riverbank Landscape and Lighting, Storm Drain Districts, every year we come to council, we review the budget and we make changes if needed. Through the years, we've been able to decrease. We haven't had any increases in over five years. So, anyway, the districts are doing well. So, tonight is recommended that the council consider amending and approving the fiscal year 2017-18 engineers' report and order the levy and collection of annual assessments for the five landscape and lighting districts, but right now, we're going to do the four and we're doing the two storm drain districts at a later time. So, we're looking at the four landscape and lighting districts. So, annual assessments cover the costs of landscape maintenance, street lighting, and capital improvements. District budgets are reviewed annually. Annual assessments cover maintenance and operations, district, and the same thing with the storm drain districts. Budget highlights, all landscape and lighting and storm water budget assessments will remain the same with the exception of the district benefit assessment for the Crossroads LNL District. Due to the matured landscaping within the Crossroads District Benefit Area and the aging irrigation systems, the maintenance costs have increased and the annual assessment will need to be increased to cover these costs. So, the proposed new assessment will increase by $17.88. So, the new annual charge for the district will be 92.13. And I wanted to just go over what that Crossroads Districtwide Benefit Assessment covers. It covers the maintenance of Silver Park, 21 acres of neighborhood parks, the three roundabouts, Crawford Road, and portions of Oakdale and Morel, entrances to the Oakdale-Crawford, Roselle and Crawford, and Roselle and Grow, 33,500 linear feet of trails and bike path, pedestrian connection sites leading to the trail, as well as Black Sand Creek area and the water tank area on Saxon Way. So, with, we did have a healthy reserve and we've done some improvements. So, I wanted to show you the improvements we've done within Crossroads. We did have an issue with, on Crawford Road, with the trees, the roots bringing up the sidewalk. And so, here's a picture of what it looks like now. We were able to make these improvements without further damage to our curb and streets. We also added the tech line which, and some drought tolerant plants. So, these are, this is a picture of what the roundabouts were looking like. We weren't able to water. So, we improved that by putting some bark and some low maintenance as far as water and also put the tech line in on those. Ridgewood Place, the annual assessment will not change. Consolidated, those five districts or six districts will not change. River Cove will stay the same. Sierra Vista will stay the same. So, the recommendation tonight is for council to approve the annual assessments for the four landscape and lighting districts. Is there any questions?
Questions or discussion? Is there any questions, comments from the public? Saying none, I bring it back to the council for consideration of Items 5.1A. You know, this is not working. I have a new computer and I'm not doing well with it. I'm not this bad, am I? Yeah, let me have the paper. Thank you. Item 5.1A, Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District; Item 5.1C, Ridgewood Place Landscaping and Lighting District; 5.1D, River Cove Landscaping and Lighting District; and 5.1E, Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District. Do I have a recommend?
I'll make a motion that we consider the adoption of Items 5.1A, 5.1C, 5.1D, and 5.1E. A second.
We have a motion to approve.
And Mayor, just a point of order, a separate, the motions can stand, but separate roll call votes on each are required.
Okay. And a second on the 5.1A, C, D, and E?
Okay, so for Item 5.1A, Consolidated, Council Members Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Item 5.1B?
No, C.
5.1C, Ridgewood. Council Members Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. 5.1D, River Cove. Council Members Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Item 5.1E, Sierra Vista Estates. Council Member Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Is that it?
Yeah.
All right, we're continuing Item 5.1B, Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting Districts. Okay. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council. So, we're recommending tonight the approval of the 2017-2018 Engineers Report for Crossroads Landscape and Lighting District. As I had stated earlier, we're going to have to do an increase of $17.88 annually. The new dollar amount annual assessment is $92.13. And then, as I stated earlier, the Crossroads Districtwide Benefit covers all of these different areas. There's a lot of areas that the benefit district covers and because of the maintenance, the trees are getting larger, the irrigation systems needing improvements, we're needing to put in this slight increase just to cover that and make, so that the area still is maintained to the residents and to the city's standards. And again, the improvements that we made, that we had to make due to the trees that were planted at the time, trying to, you know, improve that and make it look nice and, like, putting in the tech line is really helping a lot, especially with the drought, even though we had a really nice heavily rainy winter. We hope that continues. In case it doesn't, we won't have that issue next time. So, as I stated, all the other zones are going to stay the same and the district benefit zone is the only one that's going to be increased. So, I'm just looking for a recommendation tonight that you approve the fiscal year 2017-18 engineers' report for Crossroads Landscape and Lighting District. Questions from the council? Questions, comments? Have to open it up for a public, all right? I did. That's a public comment. All right. Does anybody have any public comment on this? Nope. I bring it back, close the public comment, bring it back to the council for any recommendations?
Make a motion that we accept Item 5.?
1C, B, I'm sorry.
B, as stated.
I second it.
Council Members Fossey?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
Okay. Thank you. We're ready. We'll have to tell you later.
And moving on to 5.2, a resolution ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District Number 2006-01, Heartlands, for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of that is covered in Kathleen's slide, so if there's any further questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions from the public? Saying none, I bring it back to the city council.
I make a motion that we approve Item 5.2.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve Item 5.2 and a second.
Council Members Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.3, a resolution ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Riverbank Storm Drain District Number 05-01, Sterling Ridge Benefit Assessment District, for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Mayor, similarly, that's been covered, so if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions on Item 5.3?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Item 5.3.
I need public comment, too.
I'm sorry, jumping again here.
Need public comment on Item 5.3. Saying none, I accept your
I'd like to make a motion for 5.2. My second.
We have a motion to approve and a second on Item 5.3.
Council Members Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.4, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2017-2018 Preliminary Operating Budget.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Maricela Garcia, is going to present this item. I will say, as she comes to the front, that this has been a result of a lot of work as the council has discussed, both in open and in closed session, there's significant financial considerations this year specifically within the general fund. And so, it's been a lot of work even to get to a preliminary operating budget, which, for those who don't know, is simply hold their budget until we complete labor negotiations and finalize the figures for the general fund. So, we will discuss some of the other funds that will be getting approvals this evening and then some, just some general discussion about the ongoing financial outlook for the City of Riverbank.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. So, tonight, we do have for you, as Sean mentioned, the fiscal year 2017-18 Preliminary Operating Budget. It is preliminary because there is still information that's pending that will allow us to finalize this budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I'll skip right over that. So, skipping right into the general fund. The beginning reserve that we're estimating for our general fund as of July 1st is about 1.1 million. So, it is 12.8 percent, which is above the 10 percent required by the city council. Projected revenues for the upcoming fiscal year will be 9 million. Projected expenditures, about 9.4 million. So, the reserve at the end of the fiscal year is estimated to be about $748,000, which is 8.3 percent below our 10 percent required reserve. In order to get to our required reserve, we would need an additional $155,000, whether that be in revenue or expenditure savings. But the structural deficit is really the figure that you want to look at. It's 381,000. That's the difference between the revenues we're anticipating that are coming in and our expenditures. So, that, what that is telling us is that our expenditures are significantly outpacing the revenues that we have ongoing. So, for the upcoming fiscal year, our general fund revenues are going to grow about 2.7 percent or an additional $235,000 over the current fiscal year. Our major revenue sources, sales tax is about 32 percent of our revenue source. It's going to increase about 5 percent, and those are preliminary estimates that we have received from our self-tax auditor. The way things are trending this current fiscal year, that figure could change. We also have some changes that will bring some impacts to the city's sales tax. For example, a few of the stores that will be closing. We do have the Pale Issue store that's closing, which will cause an impact to our revenues. There's also been some changes in terms of things going more online. And so, that will possibly and most likely have an impact to the city's budget. Property tax current secured, although we're looking at a decrease of about 10 percent, that's from the current fiscal year. I was overly optimistic this year and things didn't quite pan out. So, although the increase that, or the decrease that we're seeing, it's still over and above what we have actually received this year. So, there is a 2 percent increase that has been factored in. Property tax in lieu of VLF, that one is also growing at 2 percent and it follows assessed values. And our transferative management fee, this is the fee that we charge other funds for the services that our staff provides to those other funds. So, that will grow by about 25 percent. This was due to a reallocation of salaries. In reviewing each of the staff members' current job duties, we felt it was appropriate to reallocate those to some of the other funds. And so, we will be receiving additional funding from sewer, gas tax, water, in order to compensate for that. Our general fund expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year at 9.4 million, it's an increase of $594,000 or a 7 percent increase. So, as you can see, the 2.7 percent increase in revenues is not sufficient to cover the 7 percent increase in expenditures. This gives you a breakdown of our major expenditure types. Our salary and personnel expenses make up 34 percent of our general fund budget. Our law enforcement contract is an additional 42 percent. Our operating expenses are at 17 percent. We also provide subsidies to several other funds such as the Recreation Fund, and that's at 6 percent. And we also have for the first year, the legal settlement with regards to the skate park that we will be paying from the general fund. So, as you'll see, this is just some anticipated expenditure changes that you'll be seeing. The skate park legal settlement at $136,000 for this first year. The final year where we will be making a repayment for this item will be in fiscal year 2021. The sheriff's contract, we currently are looking at a 6 percent increase. We've received some information that the negotiations may be close to being final, so this could, this figure could most certainly change. Calpers, we're looking at a 15 percent increase in costs overall. And our health insurance, we're looking at a 43 percent increase with the current health insurance program that we have. City staff will be evaluating new health insurance quotes in September, October. We've also factored into the general fund budget the Human Resource Manager position to remain vacant. And so, we have removed any funding for that particular position. But we also have had increases in salaries and benefits due to the fact that we have filled some vacant positions, like the city manager's position in finance, position in parks, and then we've also filled a position in the wastewater treatment plant, which will affect the sewer fund budget. A few of the outstanding items that we will have to take into consideration in this upcoming fiscal year and in the future, any potential legal settlements associated with open matters such as the Toowalamie Quarry project, which could be a positive windfall to the city, future impacts of the state budget on our general fund, unfunded state mandates, including stormwater, zoning code update, funding for our Seventh Street storm line repairs at $250,000 is the estimate, a non-motorized transportation plan, a Parks and Recreation master plan, the East Side master plan and potential funding for that, minimum wage increases in future years, which will affect our full-time wages, labor contract negotiations with the city's two bargaining units, also increases in sheriff's contract costs as a result of the finalization of their negotiations, increases in population as new development occurs, which will require new services like law enforcement, parks and recreation, customer service here at the city, and Calpers employer cost increases due to changes in the discount rate. I'm going to go a little bit further into the Calpers and the future increases that we're looking at there. So, Calpers, in all their wisdom, decided to make some changes to their discount rate. The discount rate is the rate of return that they earn on their investments. So, as they receive contributions from employers, they in turn make investments in order to have additional earnings and be able to have enough funding in order to make retirement payments when an employer retires. This decrease will be from seven and a half percent to 7 percent over the next three years. Now, it goes to show that in 2015-16, Calpers only earned a 0.6 percent rate of return. So, even that 7 percent is fairly optimistic on their behalf. I don't think I have seen any of the city's investments ever earn a 7 percent. This will cause increases in contribution costs to the city beginning in fiscal year 2018 and 19. beginning in fiscal year 2018 and 19. And the projections that we've been given have been pretty broad. They've given us a minimum and a potential maximum amount that could be charged. So this graph here shows you for the next seven years what the potential minimum amount could be. So for example, 2018-19, we'll see a minimum increase of $14,400 with a maximum increase of $33,000. So over the next seven years, we could look at potentially additional costs for the entire city of $732,000 on the low end and about 1.2, almost 1.3 million dollars on the high end. Of that cost, about a third of it belongs to the general fund. So the general fund over the next seven years could be impacted between $244,000 and $423,000 in addition to what we currently pay. Our special revenue funds, our special revenue funds are legally restricted to be spent on specific projects. For example, our gas tax fund can only be spent on street maintenance or street capital projects. Our workers' comp liability fund can only be spent on the annual premiums and the deductibles that we have for our workers' comp program. So these funds either have a legal or city council has made a special designation that they be set aside in a special fund. Some of the major projects we're recommending are pretty minor. We usually allocate monies towards risk management. This is to help alleviate any issues that we see as a risk to either the public or to our employees. And then we usually budget an amount for the Jacob Meyer Safe Tree Cut. So overall, the special revenue funds will have a potential ending reserve as of fiscal year 2017-18 of $462,000. A lot of the funds that we have within our special reserves are designed to operate at a structural deficit. So we collect one-time funds and then they're expended as the projects occur. Our system development fee funds are legally restricted to be spent on projects that are identified within our system development fee program. These fees are paid by new development. So if there is new development occurring within the city, they are subject to these fees. If there's no new development occurring, then there's no revenue sources coming in. For example, we do charge new development towards police and general government. So this provides funding for new construction. For example, a new city hall is listed in our system development fee program. And we also have new vehicles due to the addition of staff in order to be able to accommodate the new population. Some of the major projects we'll be funding with our system development fee program is the intersection at Clarabelle and Roselle. This is a joint project with the county. And so we do have a portion of our system development fees that will be going towards this project. Railroad crossing at First Street and Patterson, which is the traffic signal intersection that we're currently improving. And then the traffic signal at Roselle and Morel. In terms of police and general government, we do have replacement vehicles budgeted for our parks and for animal control. So overall, we're looking at expenditures of about $860,000 from our system development fee programs for those projects. They will have an ending reserve of $5.7 million. And once again, these funds are designed to operate at a structural deficit. The funds are received one time from new development. We build up the reserve sufficiently enough to be able to complete the project. Our housing funds are set aside in order to fund our first-time home buyers program and our housing rehabilitation loan program. We receive revenues through grants such as CDBG, Cal Home and Home. We then issue, take those grants and issue loans to those who are purchasing their first home or those who are looking to rehabilitate their home. The loan payments that are received are put back into the program and are reused for that purpose. The loan terms that we have are typically about 30 years deferred. So it allows the homeowner to pay off their first loan and then they make repayments back to the city. So it does take some time for those loans to be fully repaid. For the next fiscal year, we're looking at estimated expenditures in loans of about $519,000. And the reserve that we have includes the program income, which is all the repaid loan funds, and does not include our grant proceeds. Our sewer enterprise funds, these are all revenues that are received from our city customers for the services we provide for sewer services. They're legally restricted to be spent only on sewer-related items. So within our enterprise funds, we do have a number of funds, including the sewer operating fund, the debt service fund, capital improvements. And then it also has its own system development fee fund. Major projects that are being recommended within this current budget is a cross-connection reduction program. Resurface the entry road to the wastewater treatment plant. And we're looking to complete pond number nine at the wastewater treatment plant and a deep ripping of the disposal ponds. Within our sewer debt service payments, we do have some outstanding loans. We have a sewer SRF loan, which is due to the state. We have the debt service related to the Schneider Electric project. And then we also have an internal loan repayment where the sewer fund obtained a loan from our system development fee fund in order to fund different projects. So overall, we're looking at about $784,000 in debt service for the sewer fund. So in total, our sewer enterprise funds will have estimated expenditures of about $3.7 million. It does have a slight structural deficit, but that's mainly due to the system development fee funds that come in one time as well as our water connection fee. Our operations is actually performing extremely well. And that's given the fact that we have not been charging our commercial customers for all of the water usage that they have had. Commercial customers pay a volume rate for their water services and they also pay a volume rate for their sewer services. Because of the water meter upgrade project, we've not been charging that volume rate for sewer services. Now, the volume rate itself pays for all of the projects that we had listed in the rate study. The monthly rate that we currently charge will pay for all of the ongoing fixed expenditures, such as utilities, personnel, et cetera. But overall, we are looking at a structural surplus of $103,000 for the upcoming fiscal year. Our water enterprise are similar to waters, to the sewer enterprise in that we receive the revenues from our customers. They're legally restricted to be spent only on water-related items. Some of the major projects that we're including is funds allocated for potential emergencies. So in case there is a well that goes down or a pump that goes down, then we're able to have funds allocated towards that. We will also be completing the water meter reading system upgrade from the funds that we've obtained through the loan. Currently, the project is about 95 percent complete and should be completed by September or October. So overall, our water enterprise activity, we're looking at estimated expenditures of $3.2 million. And there is a structural deficit of $247,000. And so overall, for our preliminary operating budget in total for the city, we're looking at expenditures of $20.3 million. This graph just shows you a breakdown of that total budget we have for the city. So about 28 percent of our entire city budget is allocated towards salary and benefits, 19 percent towards the sheriff contract, 23 percent towards operation and maintenance, 11 percent towards capital outlay, and 14 percent are inter-fund transfers. And so the recommendation we have for you tonight is that you consider a resolution which will approve the preliminary operating budget for fiscal year 2017-18. We do anticipate that the city manager and I will be bringing forward a final budget to you in late August or September.
Did I miss the street light at Patterson and Roselle? Is that part of this?
The traffic signal?
Yes.
Yes, so we did include funding for that. There will be, in addition to the grant funds that Kathleen has obtained, there are system development fee funds that have been allocated towards it.
It's in this?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you, Maricela, and Sean for the work that you put into this. I think you've done a terrific job for preliminary budget.
Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, I bring it back to the city council for consideration.
I'll make a motion that we accept the preliminary budget as presented.
I'll second it.
For motion to approve the preliminary operating budget for fiscal year 2017 and 18 and a second.
Councilmembers Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item five point five, a resolution approving and adopting a five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2017 through 2022 for the city of Riverbank.
Thank you, Mayor. Development Services Administration Manager Kathleen Kleek will give this report this evening.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of the council. So our strategic plan goal is to maintain and approve the city's infrastructure and service delivery systems. One of the objectives that we reached was to present to the city council a list of major capital improvements and maintenance needs costs to prioritize for CIP and possible general fund expenditures. So the recommendation tonight is for you to review and to provide feedback on the proposed CIP projects for fiscal year 2017 to 2022. If accepted, acceptable to you, would like it to you to adopt the five-year capital improvement plan. So the CIP is not a budget document, but rather a planning tool to be used in conjunction with the budget. It is a work in progress document to show transparency and the project staff is currently managing, planning, researching, funding. So each project requires a specific implementation and financing plan, possible environmental review, and at times collaboration with other agencies. So each project within the CIP requires specific city council action at each major milestone. So these projects are individually brought to you for your approval before we move forward on these. Tonight, we have the 17-18 projects that I have listed and I have photos of and we'll go through them quickly with you. But the report itself goes through 2022. But right now, we have funding for some of these projects, but not all of them. But it'll state on there as we go through, so you'll know where we're at. The CIP is broken up into eight different sections. So the presentation tonight will highlight projects staff is planning and proposing for 17-18. And as I stated, some of them have no funding sources identified, but we staff is working diligently to find funding for those. So we'll start with the street projects. So Measure L, which the voters passed. We have a slurry sale project that's coming up. Stan Cog has just initially received their April's payment, which the city has not received yet. So with Measure L, until the agreements are signed with each of the cities, we will not receive any of those funds until probably August. So right now, we have no funding for Measure L. But what we're planning on doing is we do have money in our local LTF fund, local transportation fund. So we're going to borrow that money to at least get a project done early fall. The residents, you know, went out and voted and approved that. We want to show them that, you know, what they're paying for, we're trying to do the best we can. So we're going to at least get something started for this year. Stan Slus County has a project, a Roselle and Clarabelle intersection. They're working on their right-of-way acquisitions and they have stated to us that it'll go into construction spring of 2018.
As soon as the right-aways are secured, it should go into construction.
It should, but they moved their money so that it's a...
They told me as soon as it was done...
They'll go out to bid, but they won't be constructing it until spring.
Point of meeting. We'll look into that. It's been an ongoing frustration for the city of Riverbank.
Yes, it has. The signal at Roselle and Patterson, environmental is done. Right-of-way has been dedicated. Utility relocation is underway right now. Project will be bid in the fall and construction will begin in early spring. Bicycling, striping along Roselle Avenue from Patterson Road to Crawford. We have secured CMAC funding for that project. And that project will go along with the Roselle Avenue sidewalks. So we're trying to do both of those projects, combine them together. That'll include some drainage and ADA improvements. And that is also CMAC. And we have a small portion of our local transportation funds that will be matched. Roselle-Morel intersection improvements, we're currently working on the preliminary engineering and right-of-way for that area. Construction is for fiscal year 17-18. And we are using system development fee funds as well as the CMAC funds. Patterson Road sidewalk infill from First Street to Claus. We're currently working on the preliminary engineering for that. And that is funded through the CMAC and a small portion of local transportation funds. Oakdale Road overlay from Patterson to Silver Rock. That, we will be working, that project, I can, we can start on the preliminary engineering and environmental in October because it is a 17-18 project. So next, we have our sewer system projects. So we have our cross-connection that Maricela had mentioned. And then wastewater treatment projects for 17-18. We have the resurfacing of the entry road. And then we have the wastewater treatment plant completion of Pond Nine. So water projects for this coming year. Finalizing the meter reading system, upgrade meter reading. Motor pool. Park is in need of a new vehicle, so we have that put in the budget. Building facilities. So we have a community center needs a HVAC unit. Funding for that is to be determined. As well as community center renovation project that Sue is working on. She's, through funding, through a grant. City Hall South, replace the HVAC unit. That's to be determined for funding. The teen center ADA improvements, as well as the sheriff's building, are both to be determined as far as the funding goes. Parks and Recreation projects. We have the community center pool renovations. That'll be done through a grant. Redesign Jacob Meyer Park entry. And that'll be done through a grant with a match from Measure L. Rotary Park ADA improvements and Silver Park ADA improvements will be funded through the L and L district, as well as Sorenson Park and Harless Park and Zerillo. Castleburg Park and Jacob Myers Park are not within an L and L district, so the funding to make the ADA improvements at those two parks are to be determined. So, in the strategic plan, we talked about general fund and unfunded projects. And so, for building facilities and parks and recreation, we wanted to point out, and this is for fiscal year 2018, 2019, but these are just future projects that the Parks and Recreation Director wanted to make you aware of, so, in the public. So, City Hall North and the Scout Hall both need ADA improvements. A sports complex needs a booster pump. Silver Park Phase Three Water Park, there's going to be some fundraising for this, and also to be determined, and I'm not sure we'll be able to raise all of that money, but it's something that the city is looking at. Resurface Cardozo Tennis Courts. A parks master plan. Castleburg Park Ball Field Lighting and replacement and upgrade, and then the resurface of the basketball courts. Community Dog Park, which will be done through some fundraising and grant. So, the recommendation for city council is to review and provide feedback on the proposed capital improvement plan projects for fiscal year 2017, 2022. If acceptable to council, adoption of the five-year capital improvement plan is recommended. Anyone have any questions?
Questions? I just have a couple. Stan Cog lost thirteen million dollars because they didn't have a shovel-ready project. It was in LTF funding. Are we in jeopardy of any losses coming on up? Is all of our money safe?
Yes. I definitely make sure that our money's safe.
Because they did not, but they did get three million dollars for that thirteen million. That was something...
There have been a few cities that have lost funding, but no, we...
I want to recognize you on your CMAC. What you garnered for the city over the last year is going to be used quite well in your presentation. So, thank you for your efforts in that. I would like you to take a look at the HVAC and ADA for the community center, for City Hall, and any of the areas that we consider a sheltered area for those who are homeless. Maybe we could use, since we can't use certain funding, and we may have to use general fund, but let's be creative and go on out and see if we can get funding from other sources that will protect those during the heat of the summer and the cold of the winter. And that way, maybe we can have a matching, be a lot easier for us to afford, please. You're creative in that. I appreciate it. Okay, for the public, are there any comments on these capital improvement plan? Saying none, I bring it back for a resolution approving and adopting the five-year capital improvement plan.
I'll make a motion that we accept the capital improvement plan as presented. Second?
We have a motion to approve five point five and a second.
Council members, Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
LRA item five point six, a resolution of the Local Redevelopment Authority Board approving the LRA budget for fiscal year 201718.
Thank you, Mayor. Our LRA Director Debbie Olson will be presenting this item this evening.
This is where we get to see all the flashy...
Actually, Melissa Holdaway usually does this, and she fell ill at the end of the day. So, I am taking over, and it's going to be really dull because it's PowerPoint.
All right.
So, I wanted to start off by letting you know we have some assumptions that you should be aware of. One of them is although we do not have an agreement in place right now with the Army, we do anticipate that the Army will come through and provide operations and maintenance funds. So, we did include those in the budget. Our ESCA two work has been accelerated. We anticipate finishing that grant probably a year earlier than planned. So, you'll see accelerated costs involved in our budget. The memorandum of agreement, we do anticipate solidifying in this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year. So, we've included that. And OEA is, has agreed to fund salaries and some administrative expenses through the end of 2017, which is, was not expected. So, additionally, we do anticipate losing our funding for salaries and administration. That will come out of leasehold revenue come January 2018. We've been saving our pennies a long time to be able to put the siding and roofing back on. We're using our cash on hand. It's an anticipated expense that we've been planning for, but it is certainly a large expense, and you'll see those numbers coming up. And then again, the loss of O and M, once the MOA is signed, will also be, you know, we'll receive money that's owed, but then it'll come to an end. So, you know the funds that we have. I'm not going to go over these. You know we have a leasehold fund, grants funds, and our ESCA funds that I'm going to be showing you. Our beginning reserve is about 1.3 million. We'll add about 21 million in revenues this year, and our expenditures will be 21 million. Our anticipated ending reserves will be about 648,000. We have revenues coming from a variety of sources, as you know. Our anticipated revenues this year from caretaker revenue, utilities, miscellaneous revenues, and rents, leasehold spaces, we anticipate in, growing slightly because of the siding and roofing. We aren't trying to aggressively market the site, which what has been happening is we have to give offsets to our existing tenants when we take the roof off and have to shut them down for two weeks. So, it's a little bit of a wash, but we have gained some revenue and some new businesses that we're able to accommodate. The change is about 16%, but we do anticipate after the roofing and siding, and we can again be aggressive with marketing. Our expenditures, as you see, were, there's a change, a difference of about 5%, and that's fairly typical. Grant revenue, again, our revenue will be a loss. We've received OEA grant funds through the whole, this fiscal year, coming fiscal year. We'll only have it for the first six months, so it's a change of about 42%. Expenditures, you'll see, are matched in and out, as you can see. Here's our revenue overview, our estimated revenues. This year, we're about 18 million, and the coming year, 18 million. The difference is about 1% change, no real change. ESCA two, as you can see, we've accelerated that. That's where our big change is. We did anticipate a three-year project. We're moving it to about a 24-month project instead. Mayor, am I moving fast enough because I know you...
Oh, no, you're doing great. You're doing great. I already reviewed your budget.
So, I just want to, so the audience understands what this ESCA do is involved in, and there is quite a bit of work planned. There's a lot of work planned, a lot of, about 35 to 40 different workers on the site working on this, filling pits and trenches left by removal of equipment. We have to remove all the paint below eight feet and then repaint it. Cleaning of the superstructure happens, then removal of contaminated concrete, removal of siding, removal of roofing, and the, there is a portion of administration fee that is going to the LRA to manage this. That's what I have for you today, and it is recommended that you adopt the resolution for the fiscal year 1718 as I very quickly presented it.
I went through your budget real quick, and do we have an anticipated consolidated fire fees?
Yes. What we anticipate is that the, when we sign the MOA, we will receive by deed the undeveloped northern end cap, and we have put in our budget for next year what we anticipate the fees on that undeveloped portion of the property.
That starts, is it three or six months after the signing of the MOA?
I don't know the answer to that. You mean, when do we start paying that?
No, no, when do we actually take possession? Is it, I was told 90 days by George, and then he's...
They will tender the Ds 90 days, but we anticipate it much sooner than that. That's what they'll say.
All right, okay.
They have 90 days to give them to us, but I think, I think 30 is sufficient.
Questions or comments from the public on the LRA budget? Saying none, I bring it back to the board for recommendation on item five point six.
I make a move.
Will you approve item five point six?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second, item five point six.
Forty members, Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six, new business. I'd like to, with the indulgence of the council, take item six point two first. That should be very quick before we go to six point one, the workshop. Is there any question or problem? I'd like to start with item six point two, Measure L Citizen Oversight Committee Appointment.
Thank you, Mayor. While she's pulling that up, so as council is well aware, in November, October, rather, the citizens of Stanislaus County passed by a two-thirds majority the half-cent sales tax that will fund our roads for the next 25 years. It's been something that Stanislaus County has, and a number of other counties have tried to do for a long time, sort of a seminal moment, at least for ongoing maintenance and road connectivity in Stanislaus County. So, part of that measure included the creation of a citizen oversight committee to ensure transparency and adhere to the Measure L plan. One of the criticisms that community groups commonly give these types of taxation measures is that they're assessed, and then what you say you're going to do with the funds is not what ends up being done. And so, to partially compensate for that, a creation of this oversight committee was written into the measure so that the community can have a say in making sure that there's transparency and the plan is followed. These are the responsibilities of the committee. It kind of more, in more detail, goes over essentially what I just said. It serves as a watchdog to make sure that the funds are being spent in accordance with the plan. The city advertised this recruitment for, I think, more than six weeks. We received two applicants. There was quite a bit of interest, only two applicants in the end. John Dynan, who's here this evening, he, you can see some of his information up on the screen there. He's here and prepared to make a short statement to the council. And Carrie Pope, a local Realtor and developer, who's been here a long time and is also here, prepared to make a statement to the council. Council may hear these statements, ask questions as they will, and then select a party by majority vote to serve. The term has not been specifically set yet. It's either going to be, I believe, either a three or a five-year term, but Stan Cog has not dictated that at this time.
We asked them to be staggered so not everyone leaves at one time.
Right, so you have a quorum. And that's it for the report, and council, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
With the indulgence of the council, I'd like to have a brief statement by each one. John, if you will, please, sir.
Good evening. I'm John Dynan. When I first read in the newspaper that the Citizens Committee still needed one more individual, I was amazed. I think that committee is going to be critical for future trust in government in this county. I do want to make this a good place for my grandchildren to grow up in, and everybody's kids and grandkids, to keep it on the right track like we're doing now. Any questions?
See that you have a good educational background, and you have a lot of procurement with the coastal community?
Stanislaus County Office of Education.
Okay, and, okay. And Santa Clara?
Yes.
One of the, your responsibility to the Oversight Committee is to take a look closely at what our transportation plans are and how we are using the Measure L monies. You'll be working very closely with Kathleen Kleek and some of the other staff to get insight on where we're spending it and how we're spending it, and making sure that you have the, the funding is, and the expenditure is based on Measure L. We want to make it as transparent as possible. You may put in more than the hour that you have every month or so with the Measure L. Are you committed to put in much more hours than the one hour with Measure L?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you very much, John. Carrie?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Carrie Pope, 3237 Riverside Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to throw my hat into the ring, into this, to serve on this committee. I want to make sure that our community is represented correctly and that these funds are spent correctly. And I think it needs, you know, a lot of business sense and common sense needs to be brought forth, so I'm prepared to do that as well. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Wondering what your background is as far as education, work experience. Have you worked with government before?
Yeah, quite a bit. But be it fortunately or unfortunately, over the years, being a Realtor and developer over the years, right, I've had, spent a lot of time and know particularly off-site development as well. So, yes, I was born and raised in Turlock. I've lived in Riverbank 29 years this next month. And so, it's actually been longer than where I've lived anywhere else in my life. So, it's been a great experience, and I love this community, so.
Reviewing your background, I mean, not your application, you have some developments that are going on. Is there any conflict of interest with transportation and development?
I wouldn't think so. I have reviewed the projects that are slated for Riverbank, and none of them fall within where I'm currently working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both are equally, I believe, qualified. Both are committed to the program, yet there's only one position. And I also want to state that there's also another position that I've talked to both members about, which is the Planning Commission, which is, no one has applied for. But one member would not be able to be on the, well, could be on the commission, but not vote on anything. And the other would, is also willing to be on the commission. So, with that, I'd like to recommend that Mr. Pope be our Measure L representative for the city of Riverbank.
I'll second that.
First and second on Mr. Pope representing the city of Riverbank. Before I go for a vote, is there any following discussions? Nope, okay.
Council members, Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much, both of you. And I expect an application here soon. Very good. All right, thank you very much. Okay, now we're going back to item six point one. Item six point one, workshop cannabis retail dispensaries and cannabis lab testing facility.
Thank you, Mayor. I suspect this is the item that we have so many folks here this evening for, because no one left after the budget presentations. With that said, this is the third of three workshops that the council has held, and I know that it's been a long number of them, and, and we've talked about this, I think, ad nauseam. This will be the last before you have an ordinance to vote on, and I'd like just on behalf of staff to thank council for sort of hanging in there on these discussions, because while they can be tedious, they are important, and, and it's a new, it's a new field that hasn't, we don't have a whole lot of precedent to work off of, so our, our thanks on that. As I said, council's previously held workshops on personal indoor cultivation, manufacturing, commercial cultivation, and industrial type uses related to cannabis. This final workshop will center on retail dispensaries and lab testing facilities. The retail dispensary use is defined, are retail locations open to the public, allowing the purchase of recreational marijuana and associated products for those twenty-one and over. They will be permitted by the state, but must first have and obtain local land use approval. It cannot be located within six hundred feet of schools, youth centers, or daycare centers. And as the city attorney and I were discussing earlier, local governments may impose additional distance restrictions to other sensitive uses if, if they so desire. Some considerations that council may want to think about are location. This, this one, separate of the other issues, is probably the most sensitive with regard to location, simply because it is the most public use, it's the one that will be probably most outwardly visible, and, and it's open, like I said, to the public. So, the question of which type of zoning is appropriate is important. There is a lot of disparate information about public safety concerns. Appropriate conditions should be in place to mitigate those safety hazards and offset impacts. There, as I said, there's a difference of opinion depending on who you speak to about what those concerns are, but the fact of the matter is that, at this time at least, it's still generally a cash business, and is with banks and any other type of business that has large, large amounts of cash, there's a concern there. One consideration for the council also to discuss tonight is the allowable number of these types of uses. Communities are battling with whether you limit the amount, and what is, what is the appropriate amount to have within the community, and finally harmony with other land uses, obviously. Location, location, location is something to think about this evening. So, as we've talked about on all the other items, same, same exact question, just a different key use, should the City of Riverbank permit this use? If no, that's a very simple answer, and we can end the discussion quickly. We'll, we'll prepare a code amendment banning the use in all zones in, in town. If yes, by which level of control, more or, or less? Some options for council to consider, this is very similar to the, the options we discussed with regard to manufacturing and industrial uses, more control, allow the use within zones specified by council under a development agreement. Development agreements are, are the most hands-on land use approval that the, the council has, sort of in its tool belt. It's essentially a contractual agreement between the city and, and a, a private party under, under land use. Option two would be a little less control, would be to allow the use within zones specified by council under some sort of planning permit. Typically, a use like this would be like a use permit, those things go to Planning Commission and are reviewed at that body. And option three prohibitive would, would be to ban all the use, the use in all zones within the city. We, I threw in marijuana testing labs into this workshop because it's just one of the odd, more odd uses that doesn't kind of fall into the natural discussion in the other workshops we had, and I wanted to address it without having to do yet another workshop. So, it's required under Prop sixty-four, must be independent of manufacturing and dispensaries. It's, they're essentially, yeah, were included in the legislation to make sure that the consumer knew what they were buying, and that they were tested, and, and so there were some consumer protections. It, the, Planning Manager and I have discussed this use quite a bit, and, and we believe, just based on research, that it probably is going to operate very similar to most commercial laboratories. It's not something where you're going to go in and be inspecting the, the product. This is where scientists work and essentially create the evaluation of the product and send that data off, much like Far West Laboratories like we have here in town. So, we believe it could be considered similar in nature to commercial laboratories, or if council would like to kind of be a little more careful, we, we could carve out an independent use in the zoning code and require some additional level of approval beyond what we just do with. This is very difficult to read, but I did put a, we did put a copy at everybody's dais, and I think there's some in addition to that for the public, if you'd like to look. We just included the map because part of the general discussion should be what general zones would be appropriate in council's estimation for this use, i- if, if permissive is the direction that you're headed. Donna, if you want to come up, we, prior to me and Donna and I were discussing one other option, which is council may also, if, if, because I know it's a very difficult, it takes a lot of analysis to kind of decide where might be appropriate, just depending on, you know, a commercial area on Patterson Road, for example, the red zoning district is very different as you get closer to where it bends and heads northbound compared to maybe on the other side, the very west side of town, it's a very different area. So, Donna has an idea about an additional thing that we could do to kind of give council a little more control. You want to talk about that, Donna?
Yes. Instead of choosing, say, a whole zoning district for the use, it's possible to do an overlay district as well, if you like a certain area of the town, and not just have it spread out all over town. That can be adopted by an ordinance, and it usually contains like a purpose statement. For example, overlay districts are often used to protect a natural resource in one part of a city, or it can be used to encourage or discourage specific types of development in an area similar to this dispensary idea. So, the, the ordinance would include a purpose statement, a definition of the space that it would cover, the procedures that a person would go through to apply for this permit, any special definitions that would be specific to this district. There would be standards for review and approval, so if somebody applied within this overlay district, staff would know how to kind of weed out, well, didn't even say weed out, but-
There you go.
Sort out better uses. And then it'd have an appeals process, as well as talk about conflicting provisions. So, say, for example, if something is permitted in the overlay district that is not permitted in the regular zoning, which one takes precedence? So, this, this kind of spells it out as to if a use is approved somewhere in a certain area, and what are the guidelines for approving a project in that district?
So, an idea along those lines that she and I were discussing earlier is that one of the things we could do is wait for a proposal. If, within the code, it, if council were to go the development agreement route, we could wait for a proposal, because really it comes down to where can the property be acquired or leased to do this use? And if council had some sort of temperature for that, in, in other words, they were interested in that, we could create an overlay zoning district within that geographic boundary, you know, provided that it was six hundred feet from all of the sensitive uses that we discussed. So, there's a lot of options. You, you're not tied to making any, you know, concrete decisions about where in town might be appropriate tonight, but general direction would be helpful so that we could bring you something that at least is palatable. And I think that, yep, and that's the end of our presentation. Are there any questions or comments? We'd be happy to address those.
Okay, questions, comments?
Let me go.
Please, no, no, keep them to yourself.
All right. First off, I think we have made some big strides and some progress moving forward with our commercial ideas and the way we're going, and I just want to encourage the council to continue in that mindset. I was very pleased after the last council meeting. I really appreciated public comment, and think that we need to heed that for tonight, and kind of take our same approach, is what I would like to see. Testing, I would like to see it rolled into the commercial area, it just makes sense. We've already kind of gone that route, and I, I just, that's my own two cents on that. In my mind, I feel we have three basic retail areas. We've got a downtown retail area, we've got a Patterson retail area, and a Crossroads retail area, and I would hate to see it restricted to one and not having the opportunities for the others. Being a retail person in, in the downtown area, I just think that we need to keep our options open and not limit ourselves again, and, and think about letting the business folks take over the business into this, and leave that to the professionals, and not make some of these things so restrictive that they can't do a competitive business. So, that's where I'm at with it.
Yes.
Um, I agree with the laboratory, bringing in laboratory testing is fine, but I am not for bringing marijuana sales to the City of Riverbank. I don't feel we have sufficient sheriff to take care of any issues that could be happening with that. There's a lot of money coming in, a lot of people that would be in and out that door, and I think it's a concern for our citizens. We're a small town, that I just don't think, right now, is appropriate time to bring that in. I believe the manufacturing definitely is, could be really beneficial here in the city, but I just, I, I can't support bringing in marijuana sales.
I agree. I think that having dispensaries, yes, it's a lot of options for us. It would bring in sales, bring in, you know, help our budget and all, but I just don't see us having dispensaries. And I agree with the lab testing and the indoor cultivation. I think that's the best way to go. And I think that with the lab testing, that we have the same kind of controls that we have talked about for indoor cultivation, that we always know what's going on, and permitting and so forth, going through the city.
Likewise, I agree that the laboratories ought to come in. I favor an area where commercial, marijuana is growing in a commercial sense, and it should be one or two areas, which I think it'd be easier to maintain it, place it with the staff that we have on our police services right now, because instead of being spread out all over town, it would be more centralized. Likewise, as far as dispensaries, my only problem with comments that my other two council members have made is, they could put it right across the county line, I mean, the city line, right in our backyard. We can't touch it, but the same problem's going to be there as if we had it on the other side of the road. The difference would be, we would at least get some revenue from it, and, because you're not going to stop it if, if they, if they did that. They could put it right across the bridge in San Maken County, they could put it right across the, you know, Clarabelle Road, put a dispensary there. So, I would favor having maybe a couple of dispensaries in our community at just some places, because it's going to happen either way, and at least we could take some benefit of some of the tax money.
In the Prop sixty-four, is it within our sphere of influence or within our city limits?
It's within the city limits, Mayor. I know that there were, I'm not sure the status of the discussions at a countywide agreement, maybe some kind of tax sharing solution to this, but under the regulations, it's up to every local entity, every local agency to regulate within its boundaries.
But in our sphere of influence, we should have some control of what goes in and what does not, so I, I'm in favor of expanding our sphere of influence. For dispensaries, in the county, since we last met on this issue, six more dispensaries popped up, and there's no way to stop them. The only way you can stop them is by self-policing. I had a lengthy discussion this morning with the man who does the enforcement at the county, and it's hard to, to shut them down, and it would be hard to prosecute, let alone in, in the state that is so permissive in the use of marijuana. It would either be a total ban, but that is going to be difficult to do if you do a total ban, because it will still be there. Offered a ride in a helicopter to go take a look at all the marijuana grows around Riverbank. I'm going to take them up on it. But you can't, you're not stopping it, and the, the state is so permissive that you have used to be felons now slap on the wrist, and they're the ones that are out in the streets now. That's the reality of what's going on. Even further in the reality is, we could have a dispensary and not know it, but a person who's operating a dispensary would know if his dispensary's sales are going down because of another dispensary, because of the culture. I'm not a proponent to have it regulate, or available in three different areas of the city. I think we should take a look at what is the requirement for a dispensary. The requirement is for about one dispensary per sixteen thousand residents, and in that, that's where we should start looking at the limitation. As the city grows to thirty-two thousand, then we allow a second dispensary, whether it be, oh, depending on the difficulties or the successes with the first dispensary, how we monitor, regulate the second one.
I'm all right with taking a look, and, you know, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay. I've, I've been interrupted all day today.
No, I'm, I'm just going to write my note down. I'm so sorry.
Bringing it out into the retail, I can see a lot of issues. We have issues right now with gas stations and convenience stores and pizza establishments being robbed, because it's convenient, it's along the way. I would like to have it in a protected area, probably adjacent to or embedded into the, the commercial grow area, only because that will give an added security and a deterrent in having it a more easy surveillance and inspection by our police services. For the lab testing, I think the lab testing should be along the lines of commercial grow and also retail. It is not just a lab testing, although there are specifics on it. It is a cannabis testing, and that we should have some safeguarded mechanisms in case federally something happens, and we can pull the plug right away if it's going to be harmed with the city. Having it open-ended, or having it as a, treating it as a regular testing, to me, doesn't give you the controls, nor does it give you the trip mechanism if you should happen to have to pull it because of federal, or if there's something they're doing that is not legal, we can pull it as long as they know in advance that, you know, these are your guidelines, please do not exceed them. Okay? Please?
I just wanted to add to that. I, I like the idea that you're talking about of, of maybe limiting the number. I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, but what I, what I would not like to see is saying, well, take it in one area, but not another. I think, just, I guess if I was going to open a store, I wouldn't want to say, oh, we can open it here, but we're not going to open in that retail area. I think we need to kind of keep, keep-
We can.
So, we can limit the number, that's fine. If we want to limit the number, I'm all for that, but I just don't want to limit the number like, we want this specific spot, we're not going to open it to others. But to have a central location where the commercial is, is maybe, I like that idea a lot, actually. Yeah, but just-
I know you two are dead set against it, but there, that's going to happen whether we know about it or not. The, I met with Sheriff Christiansen this morning, and we talked about this specifically, and he, he was very candid that, well, first off, he's dead set against it. and he, he was very candid that, well, first off, he's dead set against it, but there is reality that is here, it's voted in, and that is a permissive state, that we are not gonna be able to control it if we turn a blind eye and say we're not gonna allow it. But you can control it if you do allow it and give it guidelines.
And do we limit the number of liquor stores we have in the city?
There is. I don't know what the limit is, but they have to go by licensing, and it goes by need.
It's not in the munich code, but it is, the ABC has saturation track, within census tracts, so you can't have over a certain number of licenses within each census tract. And it's not clear yet, I don't think, whether the state agency that will be kind of overseeing marijuana has created something similar. Have you heard?
Not yet. So, to give the council a little bit of an update of what's going on right now at the state level, there's been a lot of movement lately. You're probably familiar with Senate Bill 94, which is a trailer bill that the governor has at his desk, and I believe his deadlines assigned to budget is tonight. So, I don't know at this time whether it's been passed or not, but essentially what this trailer bill for the budget does, as the council's familiar, there's two bodies of law essentially for cannabis. There's the medical, and then there's the recreational or adult use. So, this bill effectively combines the two to hopefully streamline a lot of the regulations and the control and the agencies that are gonna oversee the implementation of these bodies of law. And it's, it's going to now fall under what is known as the Medicinal Adult Use Cannabis Regulation Safety Act. So, basically, they combine both acts, and there's a few things that are going in place. Now, you're probably also familiar that a few months ago, the agency that's in charge of the medical side issued draft regulations that have been circulated to agencies and stakeholders for comment. Those are essentially now null and void, because now we're under a new umbrella. So, most likely what will happen is emergency regulations will be proposed and circulated in order to get everything up and running, hopefully before the January first, twenty-eighteen deadline. There's a few deadlines that are coming up, but really to go back to Sean's question, right now, it's really, literally in a state of flux. It's a little unclear on how some of these regulations are gonna fall out.
The combination of Adult Use Marijuana Act and MRSA, it's actually counterintuitive to have those two together as under one umbrella, because they have different purposes.
Correct.
Although I don't believe it cures cancer or whatever, it does have some medicinal use, I believe.
So, essentially what it does.
The other has no medicinal use, it's recreation.
Right. So, I think the goal was, as you're aware, there's license types for cultivation, manufacturing, dispensaries, testing, and they mirror each other, the licensed types. So, now the goal is to combine them, it's the same license types for both, but we're looking into the regs, and the hope is that they'll make clear that you still need a separate license type for what you're proposing. So, for example, if the city council decides it wants to regulate medicinal, which is now the new, it's not medical anymore, it's medicinal cannabis use or dispensary, and it sets the parameters for those types of businesses, these business operators would still have to go to the state and get a medicinal cannabis permit for that type of use. It's not enough for them to just go and get one for the adult use. So, that way, you still maintain that control in being clear what you're allowing and not allowing, because a lot of local cities are conflicted in that. They feel more comfortable in, in what the mayor said, regulating medicinal use for dispensaries and transportation, and not necessarily for adult use.
Also, any dispensary must meet the security and safety concerns of the local population. That means protecting it from, it's gonna have a large amount of cash. BOE has individuals coming up with suitcase full of money paying their taxes by dollar bills. I see at where I work, people with a four to six thousand dollar electric bill paying two thousand dollars of it at my store with cash. I know they go down to the next one and pay another two thousand in cash. So, it's a cash-based business for right now. If that should change at any time, the federal government, I don't see it in the next three and a half years, but the federal government could say, well, we're gonna allow it too, and then it would be probably a larger commercial, and where it would be more along the lines of those who use, grow, manufacture cigarettes, and others dispensing it in a totally different manner than we have right here. And if we do absolutely nothing, try to protect our citizens, you'll see over a hundred percent increases, no matter what, in driving under the influence, deaths associated with that. You'll have five hundred to a thousand percent increase, no matter what we do, of children overdosing on the edibles. No matter what we do, we will see increases of uses, even though it's twenty-one and older, especially those seventeen to twenty-one and college-bound students. So, whatever we do, we're not stopping this freight train. All we're trying to do is manage it within our city limits. So, with that, any other comments before I open it to the public? Okay. For the public, do you have any comment? Seeing none, I bring it back to the city council. This is now just your recommendations to the city manager for coming on up with the draft resolution. And with this draft resolution, are we going to have another workshop for line item by line item, or can we do it separately, individually, read through it, and put our inputs for our next discussion?
From a Brown Act perspective, we'd probably have to have a public meeting on that.
So, we're gonna have a public meeting on approval?
Yeah, obviously individually, I'll go through each of the, you know, the regulations with each of you individually. The message that I received from council last time, at least with regard to the commercial component of this, the commercial cultivation, was get it done and get it done quickly. And so, the intent here is to take whatever the feedback, the majority feedback is here this evening, wrap it up with the commercial component and the personal use component, and get you a fully formed ordinance that is voted on. And so, if, in discussions leading up to that point, I think that another workshop is necessary, where you go line item by line item, we'll agendize that.
I know that there's some dissension, so, Councilmember Fossey, go ahead and make your recommend, we're getting guidance tonight.
My recommendation would be option three provision.
On testing?
Oh, on testing?
Yeah, you have two portions of this, please.
Yeah, and for, on lab testing, what's my choices on that one?
It could either just be.
Go back to that slide.
Yeah, could you?
Yeah, sorry.
Go back to that slide. On different pages on our.
Lab testing could be either, we could consider it similar in nature to commercial laboratories, which we already have a use for, or as an encode, or we could carve out an independent use, as the mayor said, just in case things change federally.
I would consider it similar to, in nature to, commercial labs.
Having, having a central growing area, having a central area where your laboratories could be close to the growing areas, so that they can do the processing, or the, or the whatever, and having the processing nearby too, if we allow that in. And I still favor having, based on what you said, one to two dispensaries in town, just for the reasons that I stated earlier.
Thanks, Mayor.
I'm on the, I'm on the, I'm the liberal run of the bunch here, and I think we need to have the testing and the, in the commercial. I really like the idea of having the testing with the commercial, it kinda makes sense to me. I, I just don't wanna see us regulate ourself out of allowing businesses to be competitive. And that's just where I'm at with the business part of it. So, that's where I'm at with it. I'm on the other.
Mayor, just so I make sure I've got my notes correct. Councilmember Campbell, option one with regard to just marijuana dispensaries was more your, your tone, more control within the development agreement in commercial areas, or, I wanna speak for you, so I'll make sure I get it right.
As the mayor stated, right now, it's about one to every sixteen thousand or something like that, and I earlier stated some reasons why I felt we should have at least one or possibly two, just because we can get the funding, and they can be right in our back door, across our line, and doing the same thing, and we won't get the funding. And the funding's necessary to help control this whole process, because we're going to need some additional police services and other things to be able to help control it. So, that's my take on that.
You can give me where I'm at with that, okay.
I prefer the option one for the dispensaries. Location to be determined by market, whether it is, I'd like to see it really contained, but that's not what the market's going to bear. But, give it the retail and the, where the commercial grow area is. Don't, don't be restrictive. I'd like to see only one, at least now, until such time as we can establish firm lessons learned. For the testing facility, I'd like to have a higher level of regulation, because it is not just testing any commercial, but it is testing marijuana or cannabis, and that there are rules that we may wanna impart immediately to stop any testing if we deem them to be out of regulation. Whereas, if we do it like any other, then we would have to show how closely we monitor other testing facilities, such as Compass Foods, any of the other testing that goes on out at the LRA, how much oversight we provide them versus this one, and I prefer to make this separate, so we don't have any legal issues along those lines. So, when we bring it back for the regulations, I'd like to have it in four different blocks for the votes. You know, the commercial grows, and what, the individual that we've talked about, the dispensaries, and the testing. So, when we go on up, it's one regulation, but we're gonna take it in parts.
So, Mayor, just so I got that right, individual grows would be one, retail dispensary use would be two, manufacturing and other associated industrial or cultivating uses, three, and testing, four.
Yes. Is there anyone who wants to add a fifth or sixth one?
I just wanna clarify something. I also am for option one, and pretty much go along the same lines that you stated it, because you stated it better than I said it. So, I'm in agreement with what the mayor said.
Mayor, sorry, just one more clarifying question, because, so, I have two members that have stated option one, and with specific note towards our ratio of one to sixteen thousand.
Don't, leave that blank, but leave that as a reasonable expectation, you know, and we can determine, you know.
Be determined.
Right, because if we say we're only gonna do sixteen thousand, but then you have a very responsible retailer that has very responsible acts, do we say, okay, now we're gonna limit it? I don't know. And if, if it is separated from a medical, which it won't, it still could be possibly separated from a fun use, I don't know how to handle that right at this time, but I do want it to be a developer agreement, and I do want to have it option one, and no matter what.
So, we'll, we'll keep it to be determined on ratio, we'll keep it to be determined on what commercial area, we'll stick with developer agreement, and just so the community knows the way it is, we'll block these into our four separate sections, we'll notice all of them out, so the community can come and give their feedback to council when it's time to vote on it, and then any amendments that need to be made can be made at that time.
And I think that we should have, I don't like doing it, at least enough overflow, because we may have a large influx. This right here is a passive group tonight, you could have some more aggressive groups. Do you have guidance?
Yep.
Thank you, council. Okay, proceeding to item seven, consistent with item seven, one, staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two items tonight. One is that we received a note today from the county that Caltrans has finally approved the environmental, approved or released the environmental document for the North County corridor. They're waiting for the signature of the District Ten directors, they expect Friday, and we've heard that before. With that said, if we do get it Friday, the actual release would be July sixth. They are putting a newspaper and press release together currently. What's interesting about this for Riverbank, aside from that it's a large improvement just south of our borders, is that the EIR will be available here at Riverbank City Hall for anybody in the city or outside the city that would like to review it after that date. So, we, and we expect quite a bit of interest in that. The other item, I'm gonna ask Marisol to come up and introduce our new accounting manager, who's been on board with us for, I think, about a couple months now, and this is the first meeting we've been able to get her to come to. Her name is Anna Nicholas, and she comes from the city of Turlock, so maybe you could tell us a little bit about her.
Mayor and council members, please introduce to you Anna Nicholas. As the city manager mentioned, she comes to us from the city of Turlock, has been a resident of Stanislaus County for quite some time. I've been extremely pleased having Anna here over the past five months. She has made some significant impacts to the operations of our department, and so she's very much welcome, and we're glad to have her here. Well, thank you. Thank you for the warm welcome. I'm excited to be here. I'm a native of Stanislaus County, so I won't tell you how many years, but I never thought my career would bring me to Riverbank. I grew up in Houston, worked for the city of Turlock for about ten years, and then now here I am, and I'm so excited. I have met some phenomenal people here. Everybody has been so welcoming, and such a, the tenure of the employees that's here has been remarkable. You have a lot of long-term employees, that's just, it's fantastic. So, everybody's just been so embracing and showing me around, and so it's been great. It's been great, and I'm excited to make some improvements in the finance department, and got a great team to work with there, so things are good.
Well, thank you, welcome.
Welcome. Yeah, thank you. Any questions?
We may have some as you present your budgets later on.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And that's all from staff this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossey?
First of all, I'd like to wish everybody happy Fourth of July, that weekend's coming up, and it's pretty exciting. I know a lot of people like to do fireworks. I like to see fireworks. I don't like to hear fireworks five days before, or five days after, and five months after. I do have dogs, I have friends that have young kids, so I'd like to ask the public to be considerate, and remember there are people that live around you, and people that are worried about fires happening from illegal fireworks, and please, think about those when you're doing them. Do them all July fourth, have at it before and after, let's try to control them, and have a good time. Thank you.
Member Campbell?
I agree with Councilmember Fossey about the fireworks. Over the past few years, it seems to be increasing countywide with more and more illegals. I know last year, I saw quite a few around Riverbank, even in my neighborhood where I live, and some of them were pretty close, and close enough that I felt my house shake, that's how loud they were. So, I would encourage you that if you see any fireworks that are illegal, our police force can't be everywhere, but you can call them and say, hey, this is going on, because it is rampant in some areas, and we can help control that, and they know it's illegal, but something's gonna happen sometime soon, somewhere, might be here or somewhere else, where there's gonna be a real disaster. So, I'm asking you, as the public, help the police force out. They can't see it all, report it to them. These guys- These guys are breaking the law. And that way we can all have a safer fourth. Likewise, I'd like to say the rivers are going to be higher, the snow melts there, so if you take your children down, make sure they have life jackets on them because if you're not familiar with those waters, they'll snatch you in just a minute and put you under. So be safe at our rivers, especially in Jacob Myers Park. And there is a Herb Henry gospel concert that is being put on for benefit for the Historical Society Building Fund, and that's going to be this Friday night, it's fifteen dollars, at the Community Center at, uh, seven o'clock. Herb Henry's a great gospel singer, so if you're available, come on down and support it. The funds all go to help build the new annex for the Historical Society. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Um, I would like to invite everyone to come out to the Kids Health and Safety Fair and Bicycle Rodeo, which is going to be held on Friday, July seventh, from five thirty to seven thirty. And it's at our Family Nights Out, uh, Concerts in the Park at the Farmers Market, which is on Fridays at the Community Center. So I'd like to invite everyone to come out. It's a real, um, big event for kids to come to, a lot of good resources. Um, I partner with, uh, Sheriff's Department and, um, it's a really, a really good event and the kids have a lot of fun, so come on out and have some fun with us. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor.
You guys have kind of covered everything that I had tonight. I just want to add to the life jacket thing in rivers, just another reminder that the fire department loans free life jackets for anybody that needs them, so, and our fire department's right over there. So please use those life jackets. Our rivers are still cold and running fast, so that's my only caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any county services that's going to be with the, um, uh, concerts in the park, Farmers Market?
We haven't coordinated that, but they've, they've been asking for, you know, uh, large community events that they can be present at, so maybe that's a good one that we could-
Yeah, I, if we could coordinate that, please, because that would be good for, um, understanding some of the homeless issues. I appreciate that. And, um, when are we going to stop just baselining the water meters but go back to actual usage? Maricela?
I don't know.
Or, and you can address monthly billing at the same time.
Well, Anna has a wonderful staff report she'll be presenting at the next council meeting in July regarding that, but we, we do have a proposal, um, in terms of the timeline to return to the volumetric billing for our residents and for our commercial businesses. We are waiting, we have about four hundred meters that are left to be installed. We're waiting for those to be completed, um, so that we have the opportunity to do some internal, um, testing on those, make sure that all of the readings are coming through correctly before we go ahead and, and do that. Um, something that I did want to mention is that we also did not want it to coincide with the fact that as of July first, we'll be having a rate increase for both our sewer and our water. We felt that the impact of having the rate increase plus the volume rate, um, added was probably not going to be the best scenario in terms of customer service to our residents, so we're-
If we have hiccups like that, let me know because I'm on the front line.
Certainly. We're, we're trying to avoid that as much as possible, so at the, the next council meeting, we will have a full timeline for you.
Can we start viewing the, um, our water usage online yet?
Extremely soon. We're almost ready to roll that out.
Okay, and we can do, hopefully we can do that before we, uh, start the monthly billings or whatever.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Certainly.
Can we start monthly billings before the other four hundred get in?
So we're hoping to be able to start that in January, so that we have-
Have you run that by Mr. McRitchie?
Yes, we have. Thank you.
Yeah, we, so just to add on to that, one of the, we've had the report, uh, working on it for some time with regard to monthly billing because there's a lot of components to it operationally, we want to make sure council sort of understands as we move to that because it's sort of one of those bells that once you ring it, you better be prepared to continue forward, you know, on and on. So we want to make sure we do it right.
And my last comment is that consistently at seven PM while we have council meetings, you shut down the AC and you turn the heat up. Is that to move it along faster?
Yes.
I go slower. Uh, let's take a look at that, please. All right. We're proceeding to item eight, closed session, consistent of LA, LRA, item eight point one, conference with real property negotiators. Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight, property APN number zero six two dash zero three one dash zero zero five, zero six two dash zero three one dash zero zero six, zero six two dash zero three one dash zero zero seven. Agency negotiator, Sean Scully, city manager, property negotiator, uh, US Army. Item eight point two, conference with labor negotiators. Pursuant to Government Code five four nine five seven point six, agency representative, Sean Scully, city manager, employee organization, Riverbank Miscellaneous Employees, Riverbank Mid-Management Bargaining Unit. Item eight point three, public employees' performance evaluation. Government Code Section five four nine five seven, title city manager. At this time, member from the comment, uh, uh, from the public may comment on any or all of the closed session items, but they have a maximum of five minutes to do so. Does anyone wish to comment on the closed session item? Saying none, this council and LRA adjourns for closed session.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So Sean, it says here that you're going to do an employee performance-
The regular city council LRA meeting is now reconvened. Item 9, report from closed session, LRA, item 9.1, report on closed session, LRA, item 8.1, conference with real property negotiators, direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.2, report on closed session, on item 8.2, conference with labor negotiators, direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.3, report on closed session, item 8.3, public employee performance evaluation, city manager, direction and guidance have been provided to staff. With that, this meeting is now adjourned.
Everybody have a say for it.